I think we, it was at an off meeting that we approved Peter Ratchan as the wastewater treatment plant chief operator. When I say off meeting, one that wasn't recorded, one of our budget workshops. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the hire of Chris Schluter as a wastewater treatment plant operator training. Did I get that language 100% correct? That's my motion. Is that in? Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
So Chris is currently a employee in our street department and he will be transferring to the wastewater department. Do we figure out the most convenient day? For the payroll?
We thought it would be at the end of the first week, which would be a Friday, which would be coming Friday.
Okay. He will make it effective Friday, the 13th, 15th? Lucky day. Let's make it Monday, the 16th. We'll start his day on a, we'll start him on holidays. It's President's Day, so the sewer department can pay for his first holiday. Set up on that, on that basis. We have a request, I don't even know if it made it, in there from Karen McFarlane to buy back, buy out five vacation days. She has, so that's 35 hours, and she has, we'll have 41, over 41 hours remaining after the motion go over. So that's 41 hours after, after the buyout, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve that request.
One second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is our treasurer's report, and we're lucky enough to have our treasurer with us tonight. Karen?
Okay, the treasurer's report is for the period of January 1st, 2015 to January 31st. The general fund ended the month with 268,839. The water fund ended the month with 446,679.63. And the sewer fund ended the month with 664,992.29. The escrow account has 23,335.61 in it. The vouchers for February are as follows. The general fund vouchers amount to 77,175.12. The water fund vouchers amount to 29,371.92. And the sewer fund vouchers are 20,812.97. We submitted our request for payment for chips in the amount of 123,705, which will be received in March. Also, in that 123,000 is the 6,128 for the extreme weather, so we applied for that separately. And that's a one-time shot, so we had to do it before the end of the year, our year, so. Fiscal stress monitoring, Chrissy and I participated in the fiscal stress monitoring system webinar that was presented by the Comptroller's Office. And I will monitor the scoring system and indicators and maintain and advance the village's fiscal health. So I'll be looking at that and finding ways to improve our score as we move forward. On the budget, budget requests went out to the department heads. They are due back on February 25th. The tentative budget is due to be filed with the village clerk on or before March 20th. Any questions?
Yep. The February vouchers that we have just signed, but in the numbers for January 31st were...
They are, yes, they are included in these vouchers.
In this, in the 131 number that you gave us. I'm sorry, in the 131.15 numbers that you gave us. January 31st numbers. Well, you gave me a water fund balance.
Right.
At the end of the month. My question is, the February vouchers that we signed, are they already?
No, because they were approved and then the money will be transferred when they get taken.
So as of today, I have to subtract that from my...
Correct, yes.
The chips number you gave us, was that the number from the state?
No, that was the exact number from the project.
Oh.
There's still, there's still, I think...
From last year's project?
Yeah. There's 139, I think, from the state. The rollover from the state.
From this current year's project? Is that not what we're getting awarded for next year? It's what applying to draw from our chips balance to apply to the Asher Road, Mark Crowder project?
So when we get the, I think they do that in March or April?
Yeah, I think so.
The new one? So when we get that new amount, then we'll put that with anything left from this year, and that'll be our budgeted amount for next year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome.
We did forget one thing in the personnel section. We have a request, at least in my head's under number one, a request from our village clerk that, to attend a Cornell Municipal Clerks Institute from July 12th to 16th. She's basically asking for the time, not for the, not for the tuition, but to not be charged, benefit time to attend. Did I unders, describe that correctly?
Yes, you did.
What is the tuition, you know, answer?
Seven hundred fifty dollars.
And you think you're going to get a scholarship for that?
I'm going to try.
And if you don't?
I'm still paying for it.
Personally?
Personally. I feel it's important for me to go to it, so I'm personally willing to pay that amount to go.
The village student?
I don't know why you wouldn't pay for it yourself.
Because I still want to go to the conference that's up in Lake Placid, and I don't feel the village should have to pay for both. It's either Lake Placid or San Antonio. Karen and I were talking about that.
That's the NITE com, conference.
Yes, that's the NITE conference. I didn't feel that the village should have to pay for both.
Why is that?
I, I, I never asked the board for money before, so I don't want to ask for it now. So I, you know, I...
But this is work related, that is not...
Your concern for the village's dollars is really appreciated, but let us, we'll, let us know how you do on the scholarship, and we will talk further about what our goal might be. Is that okay?
This, my attendance contingent on getting, receiving the scholarship, because I still want to go regardless of your...
No, no, that, I was making an additional aside from whatever the motion we made based on your request.
Okay.
What is the scholarship application process?
I have no idea. I've never applied. It's a, you should know, it's a 30-year program. And it's three years, and you go for three and a half days for three years. And you have continuing credits that you have to do during that course of the year so that you can, it's just like any other college credit, you have college course, you have to have some of the credits so that you become certified and become a registered village clerk at the end. I just feel the more knowledge I have, the better I can do each other.
Who gives the scholarship?
Cornell, through the institute.
Oh.
Through the Municipal Clerks Institute.
So if, if the village pays for it, can we still get the scholarship?
I think I can apply for it in any outstanding balance, the village can pay for it.
Why don't you do that?
Yeah, so, you know, at this point...
The scholarship isn't available yet.
Okay. So why don't we, I'll make the motion to approve the request as submitted, with the understanding that we can follow on again when we learn more about the potential expenses, so that at least that will allow Kat to, to make her reservation to class, and then we could, once the financial picture becomes clear, we could address it again.
I see.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll keep this on the agenda for the past, so we don't forget for the...
It's on the loop.
Hans, the water department?
Well, we treated January, probably, a lot of the lowest in a long time, lowest number for a long time, 11.78 million gallons. We, I mentioned before, we have the control valves installed into the pump station, and they are working just excellent. And everybody is happy, cleaning themselves, and I think it will cut down some of the migraine, which I shouldn't say that well, we were, it's very, very good. There is a change order coming, which the guys were not ready for yet, but they have the contractor. The change order has to do with while they were installing the control valves, they find, they found that the control panel, that control center is so antiquated that we can't get any spare parts anymore. So I requested an estimate to fix and replace the control panel as well for these valves. And my guess is maybe around 10 grand, but I'm just guessing at this point. So I have to come back with that in the, in the next week or so. I told you about the tri- filter units, and one of the undertrains for the filter have broken. And it broke because the bracket that held them totally corroded out, and there was no more support for these, for these undertrains. And the guys in the water department had to dig out about six or eight feet of filter material manually, bucket by bucket by bucket. We couldn't find anybody who does that. They had just about done doing this now. We found that there's eight of these undertrains. The first one that broke, you know, maybe could tell from above, but when we went to, when they started digging out the rest of this, there were seven more that needs to, where the bracket's totally corroded as well. Now, we have two of these tri- filter units. One of them got out, and so we want to fix it, we want to fix that, and we ordered a, one of the undertrains, and there's not, it's such an old technology, we couldn't find anybody to make these, but they finally found somebody, and they, we ordered one for the cost of 4,900 dollars, almost 5,000 dollars. So, you know, this, this work on these filter, digging out the filter trains, and that took a lot of time and so on and so on. One of the drawbacks was that we did not install like a lot of meters, you know. But anyway, so...
Hans, are we going to replace the media with fresh media?
Well, we, we are looking at doing that, but apparently it can be cleaned, we may not have to do that, you know, but it is, we have it all piled up in the middle of the active building, you know, so Tom thinks that we may be able to use it over again. What looked bad was the top part of it, the bottom of the bridge, you know, so we tried to take a sample and shade it and glue it and so on, and it self-cleaned essentially. My, my answer would be most likely not. Water distribution system, we contacted, I contacted Troy Wojciszewski from Standing, and we're very happy with the amount of information that we gave them in terms of drawings of where things are located and, and the data of the flow and, and pressure data and so on. As a result of that, they said they would, at no charge, not just to Route 9 hydraulic model, but also all of Livingston and part of Chestnut. The part of Chestnut goes from Mulberry to Route 9, and the part from Platt Avenue also from Mulberry to Route 9. So they're saying they, they are well, you know, on, on the project, that things are moving quite well. They got GIS data from the county, and they're starting to work with New York State Department of Transportation. We get to, to start working to find out what they need to do. We, as I said before, we only installed three, three water meters this month. The reason is to work on the filter, and the other reason is that we have bad weather and had trouble getting all the people. We had more than 80 of them in the... We had, as you remember, we had a leak near the entrance of the parking lot here. It was a line that was put in apparently years ago. Half of it was copper. The copper extended to the point of the curb, went across the firehouse, and the rest of it was steel, you know, galvanized, galvanized steel. That galvanized steel broke, and so we had to dig it out and cut it off, shut the water off. It didn't go anywhere, it was just lying in the ground. I asked Tom, once the spring comes, to dig a hole in the middle of East Market Street to shut the water off at, at the main, at the running. So we have, one of our guys was hospitalized this month. He's out of the hospital now personally, it was not, not work related, so 25 minutes I just, and that is my big one for today.
The wastewater treatment facility reported 3.5 million gallons of wastewater treated in the month of January. Reported 60,100 gallons of sludge processed and 73,152 pounds of sludge processed. So everything's going smoothly at the wastewater plant. Like everyone else, they're dealing with the weather, taking a little more time to do things. Everything's running smoothly.
Any word from Frank on that study we're, we're...
Imminent.
Imminent. Sounds good. We didn't get a delegate, did we? No, no.
I'm sure that's imminent as well.
Yeah, that comes with the report. Scott, Larry?
Oh, yeah. For the month of January, the Ryanby Fire Department responded to 18 EMS calls in the town and 20 in the village. They provided mutual aid on three calls for a total of 41 EMS calls in the month of January. They responded to five fire calls in the town and six in the village, and provided mutual aid three times for a total of 14 fire calls. They responded to four motor vehicle accidents in the town, one in the village, no mutual aid on motor vehicle accidents, for a total of five in the month of January. And the total calls for the month of January was 60, approximately two a day. And then, just as a supplement, I know last month we had asked, or Hans had asked, or someone had asked for a comparison from year to year, the amount of calls that the fire department has responded to. And the numbers, it hovered, it's relatively close, it was 754 in 2012, 801 in 2013, and then last year was 791, so they're all relatively, relatively close. In behind that cover sheet there is those years. Kevin didn't give you a breakdown as of, you know, village versus town, but we can do that with the information that's backed up there.
And we have that somewhere, is there a, it's broken down in our contract negotiation process? We went back, I think, to 2010, I believe, comparing town and village, so we had it up through, then to 2013 anyway. Is it?
That's it.
All righty. Ally, street department?
I, street department.
Been busy.
Yeah, Mike reports a tree trimming is almost complete around the sidewalks and the street signs. Tom Johnson's been doing that, he's the official tree trimmer who was trained by the Tree Commission. And they will be doing a few tree takedowns as the weather permits. They had a run of breakdowns from the weather and also from age on the trucks. They says truck 11 broke down one morning, and while they were plowing, the fuel pump quit, had to be told to the dealer up in Hudson for a repair, and all parts and labor recovered because the pump was replaced about a year ago. Winter is raising havoc with the roads, and potholes are being repaired when they are found. They've been plowing and moving snow and salt in streets. We have a new attachment for our Bobcat, which is a, a big...
Shoot?
Skid steer.
Yeah, skid steer, Bobcat.
A truck loading chute.
A truck loading chute, which can load the snow right into the back of the truck, so that's been working pretty well. The highway department is planning on cleaning the downtown area this Thursday night, but that's weather permitting, as another storm is, is being forecast for this Thursday, so they don't know if they're going to get to that on Thursday night. Mike reports that cars are left on the street, when they are left on the street all night makes it impossible to clear the streets, so there is a law.
Are we ticketing them?
The village was ticketing them, yeah, but they're not...
I'll get to that in the police...
Yeah.
Report.
So we are asking residents again to keep the cars off the streets after midnight till March, I believe it is?
April 15th.
April 15th, okay. And the hours are midnight till?
6:00 AM?
Yeah, 6:00. It is not the intent of the highway department to block cars or driveways, but it's their job to make the streets passable. And also, please do not push or throw snow back onto the roads. Another thing that the highway department's been doing is going around and clearing out the fire hydrants, but we request residents to clear the fire hydrant if it's in front of your home. But in the meantime, they're going to go around tomorrow and start doing that. They did it too today. As, as weather permits, they have a lot to do. Any questions?
They've been doing a good job, seeing, I mean...
About every three days, there seems to be a storm. Even, even if it's one inch, they still have to go out there.
Yeah, right.
So, get the roads ready.
Yeah, so any help we can get in clearing around the hydrants would be great, because they're for the benefit of all of us.
We understand, but...
No, 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 I'm saying, residents as well.
Right. Oh, yeah, residents as well, yeah.
It's the public service announcement.
That's what I was trying to...
Please tell, please tell us.
Please keep your cars off the streets after midnight, from midnight till 6:00 in the morning, and also please clear the fire hydrants if there are any problem. Thank you. That's my public service announcement.
How about your tree commission announcement?
Tree commission? That's another story. Okay, everybody has a tree commission report? The main thrust of this last meeting was back in August, the village's board decided to have a policy that when trees are cut down in the right way, that resident is responsible for half and the village is responsible for half. Now, we haven't really come up with a, with a way to figure that out. That's what the tree commission is asking the board to do. They, they have some ideas here. This, this is, a property owner in the village would make a good faith effort to obtain three written quotations within 60 days or sooner if the tree commission determines that the affected tree represents an imminent danger to public. All quotations will be submitted to Pat Cohn. Tree commission liaison, Howie Trout, are responsible for reviewing the quotes. The tree commission liaison, Howie Trout, will meet with the property owner and the selected tree service to determine the scope of the project and explain the payment procedures. So what the tree commission is asking the village's board to do is to come up with a policy on how this should happen. Any ideas?
Well, I just have a question. They're suggesting that we get three quotes, and that's a good process for us in general. On a tree takedown, does, does your experience tell you that makes sense to get, to get three?
Well, we, we have tried in the past to get three quotes.
It's always the same person.
It's always the same person, it's the lowest bidder, so a lot of the tree companies will not give us quotes anymore.
I mean, I would say that, that seems like a lot of wa, potentially wasted effort.
Well, we, we have to make an attempt to pay three quotes.
Right, okay, well, I, I guess I would reword that to say, instead of obtain three, to say, you know, to get a bid and make, you know, good faith effort to get comparative bids.
Obtain, to, an attempt to obtain?
Comparative bids, something like that, just to relieve us the burden of having to get three quotes when we haven't even been able to get those. I mean, the way this is written, if you didn't get three bids, or...
Well, the way this is written, they're asking the property owner and the village to get three quotes, so it is. But we're asking for directions from the board, so...
Yeah, and Rich is, obviously checking it out.
Yeah, we're carrying a policy, it's a good faith effort to get three quotes, and if we can't get them, we can't get them.
Especially if we're going 50/50, it'd be to the benefit of both parties.
Right.
Get as many as you can, but like Rich said, it'd make a good faith effort and...
Yeah, I would say if, if the property owner brings us three quotes, then that would, that would do it. Obviously, well, we would get three more, and then if we could, you know, if we could find someone who could beat it, then we could go with that. And if it tends to always be, you know, the same person, then we can ask for that quote from, from him as like the default. But we have to discuss with, obviously, the, it may be a different situation for the contractor when he's taking down 20 trees for the village. We may get one rate, but if he has to rely on the collection from the individual property owner, it may be a different story. I don't know that.
No, that usually they, they put freedom on that. They say they're not really, they could pay you that or they pay you that.
Oh, right. You know, municipality is, you know, guaranteed money to the contractor.
Would it make sense, though, to put these in groupings? So that you would collect, I mean, maybe you do do this already, but, so you have three applications and you grant three trees to be removed, and you've gone through the process of getting bids and whatever, maybe. Would you try to do it like, say, every two or three months so that you would hire one contractor who would mobilize once in the village and take down all the trees that were okayed by the tree commission? Rather than going on a, you know, you get an application, you approve it, then you go through the process, and then one tree contractor comes in, takes down one tree, and then goes. I think there'd be probably some savings if you were to, unless it was unsafe.
Right.
To wait and to group them and, and do it in three-month intervals or quarterly, maybe, that's the way to do it. And then that's the way you probably would get three prices, to say you collect all that data, and in three months, you can get three prices for 10 trees, and that's probably the best way to get...
Well, I think we would have to have some kind of contract with the property owner because, you know, they could say, well, your grouping was great, but I have this other guy that, you know, I wanted to use. So we have to let, somehow establish that agreement from the outset.
Sure, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. So is, is, I know with the sidewalks, typically it's the resident pays and then we provide reimbursement to the homeowner. Does, does it, Rich, does it matter if it works the other way? And obviously, then we have to collect from the homeowner versus... Let me go through the policy.
Okay. I'll get back to you on it.
Okay. So we'll have to, we'll, we'll table that till, till next time, we'll work on a, a proposal.
Okay, just to answer your question, Scott, in the past, we used to get five, 10, 12 requests a month, of trees taken down. But now that we went to 50/50, this is the first one since August.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, even if, even if it was just four, I think you'd get better value.
Oh, yeah.
Because when someone has to bring all of their equipment in, produce the half of a day, you're still paying to bring all that equipment in.
Right.
So if to do it four trees, you can divide that mobilization fee up amongst four.
Well, maybe we could evaluate that, you know, when we get the monthly, when you give the report, maybe there's four trees that are in, you know, not immediate threat, but maybe we have to move faster.
And maybe we don't even have to do it in three-month intervals. You could decide...
You can decide that, hey, I've got enough applications that are approved, and we can just, I wouldn't just do it, I just wouldn't...
Not in every tree.
Every tree.
So, does the, um, does the Tree Commission, since it's been this big falloff of applications, do we think that, were we being excessive before, or are we not taking down one tree now? Or, or seen under the above? I mean, that would be, if, if there's a dramatic falloff, then that's the question that comes up in my mind is, um...
You know, well, we, we rely on the homeowner to alert us when, when, when a problem on their trees, so... And also, the Highway Department sees something wrong, and, and obviously, dangerous that tree when it comes down.
Right, right. I, I guess...
Yeah.
I mean, it would sound to me like the policy is working. Working. But I, I, you know, I mean, I would want to be alert to the other possibility as well, we don't want to leave trees to...
Well, we still have a lot of eyes out there between our planning, zoning boards, and all of us, and lots of concerned community members. It would bring a, a potential threat to our attention.
Right.
Good with trees, Ally?
Yeah, unless anybody else has any other questions on the, uh, report here. Oh, before I forget, the spring tree planting is, um, Saturday, April twenty-fifth. We're looking for volunteers. We don't know where we're gonna be planting trees exactly, but we, we're looking for volunteers, and we'll let you know where we're gonna meet that morning.
I'm sorry, what's the date?
Saturday, April twenty-fifth.
It's in your report.
Great. No trees that we need to apperv, to be added to, to take down, recording list?
No, there was one other quest, one other request we got that morning, um, near the Beekman Arms, but we didn't, we didn't look at it because it was, that was given that morning, the request, and, uh, we don't even know if it's in the right of way.
Well, we won't, we wouldn't make the, um, assessment on the request until the Tree Commission already looked at it and made recommendations.
Right.
That'll be next time around.
Right, there was one other request to have four trees taken down on South Street, and it was denied because the trees are, um, deemed to be safe. I guess there's one spot there where the, where the sidewalk is damaged by the tree roots, which we can look at.
Add that to our sidewalk list?
Yeah, and that's, uh, that segues into the village recently received a modest grant for sidewalk repairs from Assemblyman Kevin Cahill. I don't know if you were gonna talk about that separately?
No, go ahead.
There's a, there's a fifteen thousand dollar grant we have, um, we have to determine, we have to have this submitted by June first, I believe, uh, the different areas we want to fix, so we're gonna go around and look for sidewalks that are damaged by trees. And, um, that's it.
Do you guys have anything from, uh, building, planning, zoning?
We don't, I mean, we have the report, uh, of the business they've conducted over the month of January. I don't know if you want me to go through that, it's just different applications that they received and COs and such that they've issued. And I don't really have an update on the zoning commission's work, other than that we do meet, you know, every other Wednesday. I'm just gonna meet tomorrow, where we need a good headway. That's really it.
Okay. Thank you. So, the Police Department, do you guys, do you guys have it? You got this? You got it, what number's mine?
Seven. Door number seven.
Okay. Well, I brought my own, my seven is, my seven is vacant. So, uh, for the Police Department, the month of January, there were twenty-eight incidents in the town, eighty-two incidents in the village, nineteen tickets in the town, and one hundred and forty-nine tickets in the village. There were a total of five arrests and ten accidents. The, the, rehash of the public service announcement, the snow ordinance law, local law is in effect. Vehicles may not park on village streets from midnight to six AM. That ticket number that was mentioned before included sixty snow ordinance tickets issued during January. There were some issues, as you can see, with, uh, the one vehicle. I think it's, it's on the road today, so it's, it's, it's back in action. That's the Durango.
Oh, the Durango, right.
That's one twenty.
Right.
You have to know that number now.
Seven K, one twenty.
Yeah, the K is, because they're all under the state true K, if that is. We accepted the resignation of Officer Christopher Cudaback. He, um, of course, was a part-time officer with us. He was previously working on a full-time position, I believe, in the county, but he's accepted a position with the Dutch County Sheriff's Office. And they have a policy where, uh, their, their deputies are not allowed to work for a second, uh, police agency. So, um, we thank him for his service and wish him well with his career with the County Sheriff's Department. That's all I got for Police.
Just have one question about the snow ordinance and such. So, the first thing that we do in the case that we're, cars parked in the street after hours is just ticket? Even, even in a snowboard?
The first thing we do in a snow...
Well, I just noticed that, you know, in the last storm we had, there was two cars parked on Market Street that we continually plowed around. I just wondered when, and that's a real pain...
Yeah.
For those guys, and I just wondered, is that the first thing that we have to do, all police, ticket? Or can we tow in that case?
I believe they can tow immediately, and I believe that would come from, and Richard checked that, but I believe that request would come through, um... Through the county.
Maybe they've got the authority to do that.
Because three oh eight is a county road, and if it was coming on Route nine, it would be this, the state DOT that would, that would request the tow. So, and if it was on a village street, it would be our, well, pretty much our guys who would request the tow. We have a couple of special requests to consider. I know we previously approved the use of the building for the Republican Committee, but they've, um, requested an alternate date in the case of, uh, if they get snowed out, which would be... We've already approved February eighteenth at seven. I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of this hall on February twenty-fourth at seven, as a backup snow plan. And Pat, we've confirmed that it's not, uh, it's available.
It doesn't matter if it's a state road, it's in the building, you can do it.
Second, what's that?
Uh, we were just looking at the vehicle and traffic law.
We can do it.
We can do it, if it's, it doesn't matter if it's a state or county road. We can, if it's within our confines of our ability, we can do it in the middle of a snowstorm flood or any other emergency.
I guess what, I was saying, they probably won't, wouldn't do it unless DOT asked them. Um, so we do have, I did, I have a motion on the table, too.
I'm sorry.
You have it against it all?
We're just a little bit slower.
Oh, there was a second, thank you.
I was the second, and Scott was discussing something else.
Yeah, that's okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next one is for the, um, Merton Duchess Hospital Foundation for their annual Taste of Rhinebeck event, scheduled for April fourteenth at six o'clock. And I think everyone's familiar with it, but they, you know, participate with all the local restaurants and it's like a walking tour of the village from restaurant to restaurant.
Do you have that in the past?
Unfortunately, it falls on the second Tuesday typically.
Oh.
So, I believe, is April, is the second, uh, is that our meeting? All regardless, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to approve the request. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, it is?
It is, so...
We request leftovers or something.
Yeah, maybe we can have a three PM village voting.
We can have ED stuff here.
Anyone have any other business, do we miss that?
What Rich had asked to discuss?
Okay.
The technology upgrade, the agreement.
Did we not approve that, like, year and a half ago?
I think you approved participation, this is the final form agreement, which I review, and it needs to be executed.
Is it, is it supposed to be executed when, uh, when this is in place?
They're letting the contracts at this point, which is why they want to get the executed agreement.
Meaning that, when you say letting, you mean they're paying the contracts now?
Well, they're getting, when I last spoke to Barbara Plansky, they're waiting for the contracts to come in from, uh, the two vendors that are, uh, a part of this.
Okay. I, I mean, I'd like to discuss that, uh, further, so... Anything else?
Well, we should mention the, uh, village employees had their harassment and discrimination training this week, and, uh, it was, I thought the training was good, that everyone was taking it seriously, it's, it's good that we did it, and good, uh, I don't know in terms of percentage, but it was a pretty good turnout.
Yeah, we had, almost every question, right?
Yeah, most, almost all the whole time.
And thank you, Gary, for representing the board there. We, um, one thing that I'll touch back on, we had approved the creation of a Parson Recreation Committee, which the goal is to have five members. So far, we have, uh, two interested individuals, so this would be our second public service announcement. So, please, help us, help us recruit three more members, so we can get this, get this thing rolling. I don't think there's any other correspondence, is there? We had the numbers. What's that? Well, we have to pass a, um, a resolution, I believe, for that. So, basically, uh, what we're kind of looking at is the town sent out, um, to all its taxpayers, a letter notifying them that they will be finding, uh, property owners if they do not have their properties labeled correctly for nine one one. And it had, uh, descriptions of how high the, the house numbers had to be, where they had to be located. And basically, the town asked us to consider a similar, a similar law. So, we would have to, have to look at it and have it, uh, put together before we're gonna do it. And when do our tax bills go out?
June.
So, we have time, I believe that's how they did it, is they attached it to their tax bills, I believe, um, to let them know. We have to have a public hearing, I'm assuming, and, um, so it's something. Does anyone have thoughts on that? I know the Fire Department had presented it, uh, in the past as, as somewhat of a ongoing problem with, uh, you know, properties not being properly identified, so, um, I know there were at least a couple legitimate situations there where there were medical emergencies and, and they couldn't find, uh, the individual distressed because the, the houses were not numbered, uh, correctly.
So, according to this correspondence, though, it says that the county legislator, legislature passed the law in two thousand one.
Yes, there is, if the law exists, um, that you have to have the properties properly marked, but, uh, there is no enforcement for it. The enforcement will come from the, um, the municipality. Enforcement of the county law.
And do you envision that to be probably the Building Department?
Um, I believe the way, uh, it was explained is that it, I want to say that they are using, did you read it, are they using their? I think it was the clerk. If the police said the Fire Department goes out and they, they find an issue, then a clerk would mail a letter, um...
They said, by appointing an enforcement officer, establishing a fifty-dollar fine.
Okay.
So, we would probably...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, we have to, to look at it. Anything else?
Isn't the village covered under the town, or do we have to have it separate?
We'd have to look at the county law and take a, a privacy on the enforcement issue.
They said it was not going out to, to people in the, in the village, but that's, that's what the town told me.
Okay.
Water and sewer adjustments?
Well, the only question I have for Pat, uh, there's a couple of large numbers in there, but it's not, nothing, uh, we could, we're not sending any money back to anybody. This is just the term. So, I have the motion to, uh, accept the, uh, water and sewer, well, the water adjustments that are, um...
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Looking at the minutes, we have four dates. Yes, Pat?
The motion was just for water adjustments?
Yeah, I did do the sewer. Okay, let me amend my motion to add sewer adjustments to this one.
Still a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone have any questions on the four dates listed, or the minutes? So, without any comments, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted for November eleventh, January fifteenth, January fifteenth, and January twenty-second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe that leaves us, uh, nothing left in our regular, regular session. So, I'd like to make, uh, a motion to enter executive session to, um, address the employment history of an employee.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adjourn the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, uh, this meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.